All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 7th. It is 9:02. We'll go and call this meeting to order. We'd ask for folks who are with us, if you're both willing and able to stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, delivered by Pastor Robinson of the Reformation Lutheran Church. Pastor, welcome and good morning.
Good morning, and let us pray. Thank you for bringing us together to do our work, to do your work. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community and which we live, and work, and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn? How do we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of life and strife, that we are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it's our responsibility to serve the common good for all. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively. When it is time to listen, may they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to this flag and to the republic, which is one nation under God and indivisible, infinite, and just one. Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on May 24th and the minutes of the special meeting on May 25th, 2022.
As if you remember had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there any discussion with the minutes? If there is no discussion, I'll make a motion that we pass the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is besetected by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members pass their vote.
Councilmember Bluebough, would you cast your vote, please?
He's trying to log in, I think he is. Give him the emperor's thumb if you need to. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamation, National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
If you're here to receive the proclamation of a National Gun Violence Awareness Day, please make your way to the front. All right, and if you're... We'll do a picture after, but if you are here to take a picture, feel free to come to the front as well, and we don't want anything get away of a good picture, right? Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, every day more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence while more than 230 are shot and wounded, and Americans are 25 times more likely to be murdered with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas, to help honor victims and survivors of gun violence, a national correlation of organizations has designated the first Friday of June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence, pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourage responsible gun ownership. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim, June 3, 2022, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human life.
Thank you. My name is Katie Tindell, and I am a volunteer with Wichita Moms Demand Action, which is part of Kansas Moms Demand Action, which is part of the National Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. We are a grassroots organization who advocates for sensible gun policy and keeping guns out of the hands of dangerous people. I want to thank the Wichita City Council. Thank you, Mayor Whipple, for approving this proclamation. We held our Wear Orange event last Friday. We did a blood drive in partnership with the American Red Cross in northeast Wichita and surpassed our donation expectations, had a great event, and I just want to take a moment to thank our wonderful volunteers, who are not all here today, but the ones that are, are so committed to ending gun violence and making our communities safer, and they show up and they do the work, and they're awesome. But in our country today, 110 lives are lost every day to gun violence, and more than 230 individuals are wounded. We have a problem, and it's rare that you meet somebody whose life has not been touched in some way or form by gun violence. And so, National Gun Violence Awareness Day, our Wear Orange effort is really about raising awareness about gun violence and centering survivors in the conversation and honoring them, honoring and remembering all that they have been through and making them the focus. So, again, thank you, Mayor Whipple. Thanks to our volunteers. If you guys want more information about Moms Demand Action, please find us, and we'd be happy to answer your questions and give you more information. So, if we could get one more picture with the proclamation, your daughter will do it for us. That would be wonderful. Thank you. Wonderful. And I think, I think we had hoped to light up City Hall orange this past weekend, but I think something got lost in the mix, so maybe next year we can get City Hall lit up orange for National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Madam Clerk.
Public agenda, Sybil Strum. Why does Central stalk me and treat me like dirt? Madeline.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Sybil Strum. I reside at 326 North Walnut. I am so disgusted with the Central. They have treated me like dirt. Everywhere I went, the Central was there. The last time I was not at my house. I was treated... My neighbor, who's my neighborhood watch guy, went up to the gentleman and asked him, "Why was he on the premises?" He said, "I'm not going to tell you. I'm going to destroy this house, and I'm going to take the shed down, and I'm going to do everything I can to get her out of this neighborhood." This has been going on. Your Central are conniving people, as my Uncle Joey used to say. They're pole caps. They targeted people that they want to target. I have a neighbor at 319 North Walnut that has junk in her yard, and they go right by her. My house was a 1910 home. I did not get help from the community. I did not get help from historical landmark, which was Vincent Hancock. I did not get help from the Men and I housing. I asked for it. I got no help from nobody, except Brandon Johnson and Becky Tuttle and Cindy Claycombe. I was devastated. I was homeless. I was walking the streets, taking what money I could to go to restaurants just to be warm. I did not make the deal with Fidelity Bank, but I'm paying the mortgage. I did not make the deal with the contractor they picked out, the housing, housing, whatever. I did not make any deals. I was treated like dirt. The Central is a dishonest organization, and Metropolitan Planning is a dishonest organization. And also, Bowers Plumbing came to my house at one time. I didn't even ask them to come in, and they were mad because my house was a 1910. It was an underground basement. A Mr. Spears had built it in 1910, and he did moonshining. Yes, moonshining. And they wanted me to know I shouldn't have not had that basement. I don't like the way I've been treated. I don't like it at all. I have gone through emotional distress. My kid is already mentally challenged, but now he's going through more emotional stress. This has to stop. You have to get your Central to quit stalking some people and letting others go do their thing. I kept my lawn very good. I ended up getting my Victorian tub stolen. Stolen. It cost me $2,468. And they took my wind chimes, and they took my flags. They took my Ten Commandment deal that was outside. I want answers. I have a scientist. I'm going to do it real fast. Community Day, where were you when we needed help on our old house? Nowhere. You were involved in taking it down. It was a 1910 home. It should have been renovated, but instead you let it get tear down. Commissioners, where were you when I needed you? Nowhere. I was so devastated. And Channel 3, and Channel 10, and Channel 12, I called you up to get answers, and you weren't there. The only one that was there for me was Deion Lefner, and Deion Lefner, I hope you're listening. You were there for me. When they started the procedure and when they tore it down, you had to ask the homeowner, "Can you tear it down?", not just take authority. And that's what you all did. Not you, not Miss, not Ballard, the other people. They came in my yard without my permission. I was on 2909 South Richmond when it happened, and my kids were born there, and neighbors brought their kids over to my house, but you let it go. You let that go. I think you just don't want historical landmarks up in this neighborhoods. Please, don't do that again. Go to the people that are having their lawns long and trash being in their yard. I have witnesses. I had two people that went and said, "You did not know about them tearing it down, did you?" I said, "No, I didn't. I was blackmailed by the housing authority. Sign this, or you're going to be homeless again." I went to an apartment place you wouldn't believe that was doing illegal stuff, and it was bad. It was devastation, and I want answers. Why? Why did you pick on me? I have been there for the community. I taught children in Franklin Elementary. I was on Safety Patrol from 1984 to 2007. And not just that, I worked on the election board in 1984 to 2007. Why? Why did you all pick on me? Why did the Central pick on me? Yes, there were things wrong with it, but that wasn't my doing. That was the contractor who is deceased. He did it. And I was so mad. I was so sad. I told my friends, I said, "Why? Why did they do that?" They said, "They don't know." You guys hurt me emotionally and mentally, but I'm strong. I'm sure Brandon knows that and Becky. I'm a strong woman. I will stand for anybody and help them. I'm sorry I took up enough of your time, but it has to be done. You guys, you were bad. You were bad, bad. You need to quit. Quit stalking me, the Central. Everywhere I went, they were there. Dodge Street, Seneca, everywhere. I can't take it anymore. I won't take it anymore. If anybody stepped on my property without acknowledging who they are, I am going to have a baseball bat waiting, because I can't take it. He did not even express who he was, and my neighbor, 312 North Walnut, assaulted me, and he got back. This is not right. This is not right. Thank you. Sorry I took up your time, but it had to be known. Metropolitan Planning, don't you ever come to my yard anymore. And that goes for Central. Don't you go to my yard anymore. I mean it. I'm done with you all. And the housing authority, they're not for the poor. They're for themselves. And that goes for HUD, housing and urban department. Jamie, she came up to me and said, "You know why they did that to you? Because your neighbors hate you." I went up to my neighbors, and I asked them, "Do you hate me?" They go, "No. You're the one that we would depend on for our children and our grandchildren." Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Sybil. I appreciate you having the courage each week to come up here and tell us your story. You can tell that it has, you know, taken a toll on you, and I'd like to set up a meeting with you to see what we can do to try to repair the relationship with the city. So, I'll get ahold of you after the meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Beth Rush, sidewalk repair bills.
Good morning and welcome. During public comment, we ask that you give us your name and your address if you're comfortable doing so, and also to keep your comments within five minutes. We normally have a timer. If you go over, we'll let you finish your thought, of course, but out of courtesy for the rest of the folks, just as it gets closer to that five minutes, please just try to wrap up your thought. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. My name is Beth Rush. I live at 2220 South Volusia in Wichita. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Beth Rush, and I live in District 3, the Mead neighborhood. I'm here today to discuss with you regarding the sidewalk complaint issued for homes on the 2200 block of South Volusia. Each homeowner has been sent a letter with the city of Wichita's ordinance number 88. In that letter, each homeowner was given three options for repair of the marked sidewalks. The first one was, you may level and reset the sections of the sidewalk, which are not broken or cracked. The second one was, you may hire a contractor who has a valid cement license and bond with the engineering division to perform the concrete sidewalk repair. Or third, you may have the city's contractor make the repairs for you. And I have taken some pictures today and given them, so you guys can kind of look at those. And in this letter, it does not state, and we feel as though, the city of Wichita's public trees and the tree roots are the cause of the main issue with the sidewalk repairs. The majority of the issues have arisen due to the problems of the city's trees that have matured over the years and growth of the roots that have caused the sidewalk to become uneven and have produced a possible hazard for pedestrians walking on the sidewalks. The homeowners in this area do not feel as though they should have to pay for the repairs to the sidewalk, since the damage to the sidewalks are a result of the trees planted by the city and the extended tree roots that have resulted in damage to the sidewalk panels. Councilwoman Hoheizel has spoken to the concerned homeowners in the block regarding this issue. We, as homeowners, would like the city council to revisit the ordinance surrounding this issue and consider a different option, instead of passing on the cost of repairs to the homeowners for an issue that was created by trees that were not planted by the homeowners, but rather trees planted by the city on the city easement. In our neighborhood, it is an older neighborhood, and there are lots of trees planted on the city easement, just not on our block, but in the whole neighborhood that is causing this problem. So, we would like the city inspector to come out and not just look at our block, but other blocks as well. Thank you for your time, and hopefully we can maybe get a resolution for this. Maybe there's some kind of bonds or something that we could look at to help, because, you know, just my husband and I, we got a bill, you know, for $1,600 just in front of our home. Some of those pictures are in front of our home. And we don't feel that some of those in front of our home are some that should be replaced. So, we're just wanting a reevaluation of that, and I understand this is a Kansas state law, and I have been in the process of speaking to some of the legislators on maybe getting this relooked at, so that maybe we can look at maybe getting this passed in a different way. Thank you.
Councilmember. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Manjic, can we look into how other cities might handle this type of issue? Because I understand the argument that I'm responsible for the sidewalk in front of my house. However, if the city is planting trees and those trees are what's disturbing the sidewalk, it kind of takes the power away from the homeowner. Is there other ways that cities are, at the very least, creating a payment plan or something along the lines that would allow folks to be able to not be, to get their sidewalks fixed without being blindsided with a $1,600 bill?
Mr. Mayor, based on the questions that were asked by Councilmember Hoheizel previously on this issue, we're working on a staff report. I don't know how in-depth it'll be regarding what others are doing, but we are exploring some options that the council could consider.
That might satisfy my inquiry, then. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 20.
As if you remember had a chance to review the consent agenda, and if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, then I will make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is besetected by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received five yea votes to two nay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Board of bids and contracts dated June 6, 2022.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The board of bids and recommendations for June 7, 2022 is as follows. The first item for engineering is the Stormwater System number 766, central and I-135 repair. Recommendation to reject the bids. Second item is K-15 South Water Main Replacement. Recommend to award Mies Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,315,432. Third item is for the Water Distribution System Stormwater Drain, Sanitary Sewer, Paving to Serve Sycamore Pond Edition. My recommendation to defer June 13. For purchasing, we have the repair of the Observation Deck stairs of Wichita Art Museum. Recommendation is to reject bids. The Limit Torque Electric Actuators recommend to award to Mead O'Brien in the amount of $71,435. This is how to become a vendor with the city of Wichita. These are our open requests for proposals, and I recommend to approve the bid awards as recommended.
Any questions for staff on this item? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. Thank you. Is there further discussion from the bench on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is besetected by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Petitions for public improvements.
Morning.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. We have one development with two petitions for your consideration today. As always, the signatures represent 100% of the improvement district and are valid for Kansas statute. Auburn Hills Commercial Second Edition is in District 4. Petitions have been submitted for water and sanitary sewer improvements. Misa Edition, and I apologize, I said it was one development. It's actually two. Misa Edition, which is in District 5, will provide water drainage, sewer, and paving improvements required for a new residential development, which the developer also plans to construct under private contract. Again, that was water drainage, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements. Staff recommend city council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff on this item? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We're bringing discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budget, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is besetected, seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structure, 1846 South Water Street.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Kayla Nethercott with Neighborhood Inspection with MABCD. The property up for consideration today is one we just reviewed in May. It's 1846 South Water Street. Just going to go through the pictures quickly here. You'll recall it was damaged by fire some time ago. Okay. In the May meeting, the desire of council was to defer this to allow relatives of the deceased owner to obtain a... of the deceased owner to obtain a structural engineer's report. They have engaged a probate attorney, just as a reminder. But that has not, it's a long process to begin with, so it's not realistic. There's going to be much of an update on that process at this time. I'm going to turn around and look. My understanding was that there was going to be a gentleman here to speak to you, but I haven't seen him yet, so let me just see if he slipped in. And he did. So this is Mr. Leon Dukes. He's interested in purchasing the property once it goes through probate, and so I'm sure he'd like to answer any questions you have about current status.
All right, we'll open up the floor to the gentleman. Right on time. Thanks for being here and good morning.
Good morning. Well, my name is Leon Dukes. The person that I'm purchasing the property from is a family friend and really like a mentor as far as just throughout my life. And right now, what we're going through is her, well, my friend's mom passed away in the house, so it was kind of just heartbreaking, a long drawdown status as far as emotional distress. And I told her I purchased the house from her. So where we're at is I spoke to an engineer, someone to get the engineer letter, and they won't be here till the 7th or the 8th. I said that they were out of town for the weekend, and then she is. She's working with the probate attorney to get everything switched over, so I can start the process on rebuilding the house.
Excellent. Well, Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. When did you contact the structural engineer to try and come in and take a look at this?
It was a couple days after the last court date. She sent me an email to a guy that does that type of work, and he said he was out of town on vacation till June, so.
Kaylin, how long does the probate process usually take?
I'll of course defer to Jennifer on this, but my understanding is it's six to nine months at a minimum.
Okay, and when did they begin this process?
The probate attorney was engaged in late April.
Late April.
Mm-hmm. By the way, I would just anecdotally share this particular structural engineer that Mr. Dukes is speaking of. We've heard from other citizens that are working with him. He did take an extended vacation and is not planning to be back in the office and resuming work until sometime this week.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Dukes, just two questions for you. Our information shows that the taxes are delinquent for the last three years in the amount of $2,134.46. There's also a 2022 special assessment for the board up $2,064.25 during this period of time between whatever council decides today. And if you go through the probate process, will you be able to take care of those taxes upon assuming that property?
Yes, sir.
And then, given the structure and the damage, what's your timeframe on getting all that repaired and making it habitable again?
Within 36 months after everything gets signed up, they were working.
Further discussion? Yes, we don't. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. This one's tough for me. There has been multiple police incidents reported on this property. Again, I don't want to knock down anybody's property. I appreciate the fact that you got the ball rolling as far as trying to get something accomplished with the probate process and also the structural engineer. I would like to defer this three months and just see, make sure that they can, see if we can get this process following through. Again, I just hate to take people's property from them. So I think that's probably my desire at this point.
Councilmember, when it comes to police presence, do we know any details of that? Are police aware, and are they patrolling the area? Like, is it reasonable to believe that this has been addressed and the property is safe?
From what I understand, after they did the board up process, it has significantly diminished. I don't believe there has been a police incident there since they-
That's been boarded up?
Since they've done the board up. Am I correct in that?
You are. Yes, you are. And remember that police look back, goes back five years. I believe that some of those incidents actually happened when the home was occupied, so it's been over a longer period of time. But yes, I think it's accurate to say that once we got it boarded up, a lot of that activity just stopped.
So it's reasonable to believe that, at this point, based off the information that we have, that allowing to delay this another three months wouldn't be an extended risk to the community? As far as police presence or criminal activity?
Not in that regard. I think probably there's some sentiment that they're tired of looking at it. But, I mean, we can handle those concerns as long as we're able to simply tell them that it is in a process, it is being reviewed, and it is moving forward to a conclusion.
Okay, I appreciate that. That would be my suggestion, or my desire, three months. And if there's not significant progress in that time, then I think we will probably revisit it, and I would be inclined to follow staff's recommendations at that point. But I do believe in giving a little bit more grace period here. So.
I believe a motion would be, oh, Councilmember Johnson's going to jump in on this.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a question, Councilmember.
Yes, sir.
If this goes into probate and takes six to eight months, the three-month report back might just be that it's in probate. So at that point, would you proceed, or would you then extend until after that? Just based upon what Kaylin said.
I might extend it if it's still in the process, and we've had a structural engineer and a solid plan in place as far as addressing the work done.
Okay. And if I understand the intent correctly, having a three-month hold on this would allow that process to get moving if you were to make a motion to wait until probate has concluded, and probate never happens, and it's an awkward motion because it hasn't concluded if it never got started. So having a three-month to, I guess, weigh in the progress of the process, my understanding would be your intent, with the intention of coming back in three months and making a decision based on that progress on what the next steps would be? Is that accurate, Reed?
Yeah, I believe the probate process began in April is when they got the ball rolling on that one.
Late April.
Late April.
Yeah, early, first part of May, late April, May.
Four or six months be more appropriate? I see to the advice of the more seasoned council members up here.
Oh, don't do that. I believe your intention is to, and we are open for discussion, is just to revisit the issue in three months and then make a decision after that. And that's, personally, I'm comfortable with that, but I'm open to further discussion. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm comfortable with that as well. I just wanted to clarify the 90-day piece, but I think a report back in 90 days on where we're at in probate and what it's looking like, and any progress on ours would be good.
Excuse me, Councilmember Hoheisel?
Yes, ma'am.
If you do make a motion to defer, could I recommend that we add a specific date? You're looking at three months. Specific date would be September 6.
September 6? All right, I, if there's no other discussion, I move that we defer action on this item until September 6.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Members will cast the vote, please. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass, and so we thank you for being here. This item is now delayed for the next three months, at which we will have the item come back up on September 6 with the intention of learning about the progress during probate and also taxes and structural engineering, everything that's going to need to get this thing back where it should be. So in three months, we hope to get an update on that progress, and then we can make a decision on extending that or not extending that at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, our staff's available if you have any questions to work with. They've been pretty good to work with, so we thank staff and also feel free to reach out to them. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hoheisel.
I'd just like to say, give another thanks to Kaylin and Chris. I appreciate you guys working with people and just trying to come up with an efficient way to keep our, to find the right balance between keeping our neighborhood safe and also just recognizing humanity in the process. So I'd just like to say I appreciate you guys and all the work you do.
Madam Clerk.
Amendment to the 2019 Development Agreement with Wichita Riverfront LP.
All right. Good morning and welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jay Hinkle, Deputy City Attorney. We're here today to present to you a technical amendment to marry up the 2019 Development Agreement with the team and the EPC agreement that you looked at and approved in April. As background, we would note that it was critical to bring to the table availability for the team to have development opportunities when they made the move from New Orleans to Wichita. In fact, minor league baseball would only approve such a move if there were means for an alternate income stream for the team. And we made that available in the 2019 agreement. That included sale to the team and its development arm of approximately four acres, which had not been specifically designated at that time. Now, in 2022, the team has designated EPC Real Estate Group as the developer for this, these projects, or at least this initial project. And a development agreement with that entity was presented to you, and you approved it on April 19. That development agreement with EPC included a updated and accelerated build-out schedule. You may remember, the 2019 agreement had actually four different phases that strung out over a five-year period of time. The presentation to you on April 19 from EPC indicated that all of those steps could actually, could potentially be met in this first build-out. Today, this amendment incorporates the provisions of that agreement with EPC into the 2019 agreement. This is essentially a technical modification. It's necessary in part to complete the sale of land because it provides the description of the actual land being sold using the plat that doesn't exist in 2019. It's recommended City Council approve the amendment to the 2019 Development Agreement before you and authorize the necessary signatures. Stand for questions.
Is there questions for staff? See none, thank you, sir. Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? All right, then. With that, I will make the motion to accept the recommended action to approve the amendment to the 2019 Development Agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the vote. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Approve the real estate purchase agreement with Wichita Riverfront LP pursuant to the amended development agreement with Wichita Riverfront LP.
I'm Mayor. Mayor and City Council, John Filbrick, Real Estate Administrator. Thank you. This item is a follow-up item to the previous item. This is an adjunct. As noted, in 2019, the council approved a development agreement with Wichita Riverfront LP. That included a purchase agreement for four acres of city land as an incentive to get the minor league baseball team into the city. This map shows the five parcels that are included in the four acres. At the time of the original development agreement, the acreage had not been defined. These parcels have now been platted and described. In April of this year, the council approved a development agreement with EPC to develop the first three sites. And to accomplish this, we need to modify the purchase agreement to match the current timing. By doing this, this will incentivize about $60 million of development and will allow taxes and so on to be used to pay for the project. The financial considerations, basically, this just finalizes the commitment. There's no additional financial implications. As noted, it will generate future tax revenues, and it's just recommended that the real estate purchase agreement be approved. Stand for questions.
Is there questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I will recognize Councilmember Bluebaugh as this resides in District Four.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to take staff's recommendation to approve the real estate purchase agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the vote. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and a request for a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds, Ethanol Products LLC.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Tim Goodpasture with the City's Office of Economic Development. For the record, the item before you today is a request for a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Poet Biofuels. Ethanol Products LLC, which is doing business in Wichita as Poet Biofuels, was founded in 1987 to provide marketing, trading, distribution, risk management, and market development for renewable fuels. It is the largest supplier of fuel-grade ethanol in the United States. It markets for 42 ethanol plants throughout the Midwest and is located at 3939 North Webb Road, which is between 38th and 39th Street on Webb Road. You can see here Webb Road running top to bottom, just a little bit right of center. The area outlined in red just south of 39th is the land and the first additions of buildings for Poet Ethanol. The company is projecting that it will build a 39,000-square-foot addition to its existing facilities to house administrative positions, office space, meeting rooms, break rooms, and collaborative space. It is requesting a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $17 million, which includes approximately $15 million in real property and- which includes approximately 15 million in real property improvements and an additional 2 million investment in machinery and equipment. This is an architectural rendering of what the addition would look like, which is in keeping with the existing facilities that they have constructed to date. Poet Ethanol currently employs 168 employees. It projects that it will add 20 new employees over the next five years with annual wages in excess of $70,000 a year. The company, the project qualifies for a 100% tax abatement. And the way we arrive at that level is based on the $17 million capital investment, which qualifies it for a 60% abatement, the 20 net new jobs, which qualifies it for an additional 30% abatement, and being in the energy sector of the Regional Growth Plan qualifies it for an additional 10% for a total of a 100% property tax abatement. No land will be abated as part of this project. The estimated value of a 100% property tax abatement based on a $15 million investment in real property improvements is approximately $378,000, of which the city shares approximately $98,000. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, which showed an overall ratio of benefits to costs of 1.23 to 1, 1.04 to 1 for the city's general fund, and 1.77 to 1 for the city's debt service fund. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Bob Whiteman, who is the CFO for Poet Biofuels, is here and can answer any questions specific to the company, and I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Hey, Tim, can you go back to that slide where it does the cost-benefit analysis? So one of the things that I run into, and I just want to take this opportunity, it seems like a teachable opportunity, that I run into when it comes to talking about these incentives and how they, they work is, I don't think folks fully realize that we do a cost-benefit analysis that shows kind of our projected return on investment. And could you just talk a little bit about this slide, what it is, and just walk me through it and folks who are watching, who might not be sure of why we do these type of investments?
It's an excellent point, Mayor, and a good question. So the cost-benefit analysis, anytime we do a property tax abatement in the state of Kansas, we are required by state statute to run a cost-benefit analysis. There is no requirement that the return be at any particular ratio. It is unique in the city of Wichita that we actually do have a requirement that the, the ratio of benefits to costs be at least one to one. It doesn't have to be that way per state statute. It could be negative, it could be positive, it could be 1.5, it could be three to one, it could be whatever. It's not prescribed by state statute. So it is unique in the city of Wichita that we do require as part of our analysis that the ratio be at least one to one.
So just to that point, the state statute says you got to run this so you know what you're doing. You know if you're going to make money or lose money on it. However, the city of Wichita, our policy indicate, or dictates that we really can't run a projection, go forward with it if we're going to lose.
Correct.
Okay. Further questions for staff? See none. I would love to hear from the gentleman who represents the company just a little bit about this project and just the alternative fuel in general, I think it would be timely considering the fuel prices, and maybe hear a little bit about how this helps us get through some of the fuel crisis that we're seeing nationally or internationally, I guess, with the war in Russia.
Yes, thank you. Bob Whiteman, and as it relates to the biofuel effectively extending the use of petroleum and gasoline, gasoline is the predominant fuel that ethanol is used in. And ethanol is derived predominantly from grains and most of that from corn. But here in Kansas, where we also have grain sorghum plentiful, we actually have three plants here in the state of Kansas that we do the marketing for as well. And so to address the question about the fuel extension, ethanol provides a high-octane replacement to things like benzene, toluene, xylene. The components of gasoline that are higher-octane, that's property that the fuel needs in order to combust effectively in, in the engine. And those are some that are fairly difficult for petroleum manufacturers to make. They're higher cost and also tend to have some of the more negative health effects that are associated with them. And so ethanol provides a renewable alternative to that. And currently, within the U.S., represents about 10%, a little over 10% of that gasoline pool. So also here, last month, President Biden allowed for a waiver through the summer to allow any 15 blend, so an additional 50% on top of that 10% available to help ease the price at the pump. But at the end of the day, you know, the price of energy is quite high, regardless of which source you look for at this point. And so every little bit helps, but when you're filling up, your wallet doesn't always feel that way.
Sadly true. We thank you and we thank your companies' work here to do our part with the current energy crisis. But thank you for taking the time to tell us a little bit more about the project.
Absolutely.
Is there further questions for staff? See none. Is there further input from the public? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there discussion on this item? If there's no discussion, the chair recognizes Vice Mayor Tuttle as this resides in District Two.
Thank you. First, I want to thank staff as always. Thank you for doing such a good job to help through this process. Also, thank you to Biofuels, Poet Biofuels, for investing in our great city. We're glad to have this opportunity. And to Mr. Whiteman for being here. Also, just want to give a little shout out to South Dakota. That's part of my life. I've spent some time there, so it's a beautiful state. Just another thought that I, another point that I thought was worth mentioning. In the last expansion, they, Poet Biofuels, expected to have 15 new jobs, and they actually had 32 new jobs. So we're hoping this next adventure will be equally successful. So with that, I move that the city council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures.
I'll second the motion. Motion has been made and then seconded. Clerk roll open a roll. Members cast the vote. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
20-year special assessments.
Morning, Mayor, Council, Kathy Sexton, your interim assistant city manager.
Actually, interim assistant manager. Did the city manager tell you we actually vetoed your, your exit? And congratulations, you're here forever now.
The veto pen. Why didn't I anticipate that one?
Actually, legal told me I can't do it, so you lucked out.
Appreciate that, Mayor.
I'm glad you're here.
You know, we have a fun item for you this morning, because on a rainy day, we all need fun items, right? You probably don't need me to tell you how bad the housing crisis is, but I'm going to anyway. We have some good charts that I think really drive the point home that our friends at Wichita State Center for Real Estate and Dr. Stan Longhoff provided for us to show us how the housing market these days is suffering, not only from low supply, but also from rapid price appreciation and supply chain disruptions. But it's not new. This trend is something that started in 2009, the time we all lovingly called the Great Recession, when the housing market just really experienced significant problems. And I'm not sure if our pointer's there. Our pointer is working. So you can see that this prob, we had a robust market in the 2000s. And when we got to the recession timeframe of '08, '09, we had significant issues. And it really has never bounced back since then. So this chart does show new single-family building permits. So the new homes being built in this past decade or so have never reached the even half the levels of the previous decade. So we've been working up to a problem. If you don't infuse new product but continue to have needs, where are the needs coming from? Well, population growth or new people coming in. But it's mostly churn in terms of older housing units not being necessary or available anymore and people becoming in the home market. So this very short supply also is magnified by, or shown by, this lack of supply. So all homes, now we're not just talking about in this next chart, new building, but we're talking about all homes. What's desirable, if you hear realtors talk about it, they love to have six-month supply of homes available for sale. Not new ones, everything in the whole community. Well, we have not been at six months for a decade. This is an unprecedented low as well, as you can see in this chart. Look at this. This is crazy. We're way down here at a couple of weeks of available supply, when what they want is six months, and that would be, six months would be considered a normal housing market. We haven't been normal for over a decade. In addition to this low supply being a contributor to the price appreciation we've all seen in not only recent months but years, we also have supply chain disruptions now, pretty much from the pandemic. But these are causing an increase in construction materials, lumber, and other items, depending on various factories and their abilities to deliver. But unprecedented is not a, is not too strong of a word. It is an accurate word. And you can see on this chart. Look at this. There has never been a time since the 1950s, and even the 50s, when the huge boom in housing construction was happening, or I guess there's one in the 70s, that still we're way above that in terms of the cost of supplies going up. Materials to build the homes have gone up tremendously this past year. Put all these together, and you have some pretty significant issues here. This rapid price appreciation in homes, in other words, what people are actually buying homes at, what they're paying now. We saw in 2020, 7.5% increase, another double that increase this past year. And I know we're several months into 2022, and we still hear stories, right, of how much people are paying, even above asking prices routinely now. So this price appreciation in the Wichita home, I think is my last slide here, just to show you, again, off the charts, at 14% appreciation this past year. And you can see a very fluctuating market there, but has been appreciating for some years now. These are all challenges you all know of. I just thought you might like to see some of the data on. There are, as you know, many fronts that need to be addressed. And the city has approached several of those already. This is just one more tool you have in your toolbox that will marginally affect affordability of single-family homes. This proposal would essentially change from 15-year special assessments to, from being the norm in Wichita to 20 years. Some years ago, you all adopted a program where 20-year assessments were available for certain projects if they were experiencing extreme costs. And so there's a process set up to apply for those. Some are approved and some are not. What the builders and developers have asked for recently is a blanket 20-year. When looking at that, we thought the best way to start on that, because there are downsides to that, the best way to start would be a two-year program. And the reason is, because of these historic numbers we've shown you, we want to incentivize the building and the construction of single-family homes now and in the next couple of years. We don't want to just say, well, let's change the, the amount of time to 20 years forever, because, like I say, there are some downsides. First, let's back up and define what do we mean by special assessments. That is a type of financing on, for new home construction. But it's really the financing of the infrastructure required for those homes. So private builders build the home, but they can't do that until the city engineers develop plans for each housing development. That includes stuff underground, first, water and sewer lines, storm drainage systems, and then the stuff you see above ground, which is your streets, your sidewalks, sometimes a bridge, various things like that. But mostly, water and sewer lines and streets are the main drivers of infrastructure costs. We could, like many states do, just require the home builders to pay for all that upfront and to finance that and build it into the cost of the lots or build it into the cost of the homes. And have everyone pay for that. How? Out of their mortgage payment. So that means their mortgage payments are higher. But we all always hear, don't we, in the national data, how Wichita is such an affordable place to live in terms of housing costs. And that's true, and it's partially true because the city has decided decades ago, and many cities around here do as well, to finance that infrastructure, water and sewer lines and streets, on the city's books. So you, the city, carry the debt on that infrastructure instead of the homeowner carrying that debt in their mortgage. Now, how does that benefit? Well, the homeowner doesn't have to, well, they have to, they have to pay that back, that pay that debt back by the use of special assessments on their tax bill. But they still benefit because why? It's financed at a lower interest rate. And now that mortgage interest rates are going up, I think it'll be an even starker contrast now that we'll be seeing. As we say, there are financial implications, though. First, the effects on the city's financial status. When you have marginally higher interest rates, would be likely. And that means the interest rates the city is paying on their debt, that's likely. Why? Because you're extending debt from 15 years to 20 years. So little bit higher rates, the city would pay on that debt. And then that would also extend the time, yeah, that the debt's carried by the city, that five extra years. The city at large is at risk marginally more than they are now, because why? The city's at risk for, if specials are delinquent. So as long as everybody pays their specials, it's a good partnership. There are times when people don't pay, and sometimes developers don't pay. And so one of the ways you can mitigate this risk is in this new program we're suggesting, is making sure that we require that all participating builders and developers, that they be current on all their taxes and special assessments, and then, then they can participate in this program. Now, again, this is a benefit for home buyers. Your consideration of this program today would marginally lower those total monthly payment paid. So if you're in the market for a house and the builder can tell you, look, you can pay this particular debt off in 20 years instead of 15 years, that lowers your monthly payment. And that, as you can imagine, does help make the homes more affordable, and that helps the builders in terms of marketing those homes and being able to make ends meet. The state law does allow you to go to 20 years. Some communities do 20 years now. Some do them on a, on a more limited basis. Some are still at 15, but that is the allowance by the law. And with that in mind, we would recommend that you approve this two-year program and just give us the authority. We need to sit down with some of the builders and developers and hammer out a few implementation timelines and details. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there questions for staff? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just for clarification, this is on new development? And what are the price points of those homes usually?
Well, great question. They've all gone up, haven't they, in this environment? And Wes Gallion is here with the Builders Association. He might have a better idea than I would on homes. But things are going up. Wes, do you want to? The average prices on new homes these days?
Thank you, Kathy. Great presentation, and we're here today to ask for your support of it. And Kathy has very capably explained the challenges that we're all dealing with. When we talk about affordability, what I want you to know is we talk about affordability at every price point, from the low end to the high end. I will tell you the realities that have taken place over the last decade with entry-level housing. And it's gone up. It's gone up at every price point. But the biggest challenge is entry-level housing. Right now, if you ask some of our builders, what is your price for entry-level housing, they'll say, you know, I really don't know. I can't tell you that. It depends on the person, what they can afford, and that's what this helps, you know, in that regard. 10 years ago, we could take a small home, two-bedroom on a typical lot in a subdivision, and build 900 square feet, two- or three-bedroom, full unfinished basement, two-car garage, and sell it for $100,000. Just opened the parade of homes. There is a very, very small house in the parade of homes that will sell for about $160,000, so it's in the 150 category higher. Most are around $200,000, and that's just the way it is. Can you build homes cheaper? Yes. Do people want them? No, they don't. They want certain things in the houses, or they're not going to buy them. So the one thing this thing does is address two things. Number one, the realization that cost increases are out of our control in terms of materials. It's just been horrific what we've had to face. We are amazed. The market has been as strong as it was. But based on research, we've We are amazed, the market has been as strong as it was, but based on research we've seen, people are wanting to buy the houses now and have been for the last couple of years while they can before rates and everything else go up higher and maybe price them out of the market. So we're doing everything we can to mitigate the impact through design, looking at size of lots, layout of subdivisions, all that sort of thing. And so affordability is one thing on the cost side of construction, affordability in terms of access to financing is a big deal for people because if they can't get the financing, they can't buy the homes regardless of the price. So it benefits everyone across the board, it benefits the city, I believe, and always have, that the new growth benefits the city in terms of expanding, promoting the expansion of the tax basis, adding more revenues for the city, whatever else. And the other thing I'll tell you we are mindful of, and it goes right in line with what Kathy has presented, we're very mindful of the risks the city takes, although it's marginal. We take similar risks when we open up a phase of a new subdivision, whatever else. So we're very careful not to go out and buy a piece of ground and try to open 100 or 200 lots, knowing that that project would fail financially. The market just won't support that, it's too volatile, and the guys that are doing development in Wichita today, and there aren't that many of them, understand that, because there are risks too for a lot of other things. So affordability is a key component across the board for them and others. And people are still interested in buying houses in spite of increasing challenges that will diminish as interest rates go up. We're looking at five, a little over 5% interest rates today, isn't very long to, we're probably expecting it to be at seven. Prices more people out of the market, so we're doing everything we can on the entry-level side to address the problem, working with nonprofits and others, but it is what it is, it is unprecedented, there's no question about that. And we appreciate the fact that you're willing to work with us and others, try to make a difference and keep the housing industries alive and moving forward.
Thank you. And Kathy, I don't know if you recall, one of the things that stuck out to me during our meeting with Wes was the economics professor from Wichita State who came along, and he had a statistic, and this is going to be my question, about what a healthy housing market looks like, and how you want a certain percentage to be available for mobility, to keep it, keep the cost down, but also, if you build middle to higher-end houses, then usually folks will move from entry-level houses into those, and it opens up the entry level, and I thought it might have been 4% is where you wanted the inventory to be at, and that's the number, I'm not sure if you recall that, but I do remember him saying that we're at 0.6% now as a market. So whatever it was, it was, and I don't know if you have the exact, I don't have my notes in front of me.
Well, I don't have percent, but I, what I remember is that months of the supply, that they want six months of supply out there for sale at all times, and at the time that Dr. Longhoffer met with us, it was half a month or 0.6 of a month.
That might have been it.
And so I think that's gone down even since we had that meeting, that's why I said a couple of weeks, but I mean, it's exactly right. And I think another fact point we should add in there is, the state did a statewide housing study and released those results last December, just a few months ago, and at that time, they made that very point, is that this is at crisis level. It is not just about affordability for one end of the income stream. This is about access and affordability at all income levels and any investment in whether it be $300,000 houses or $400,000 houses or less. If you can get those in, new houses on the market for people who can afford those, where are they coming from? They're coming from an entry-level house, they're coming from a $250,000 house that a family can then move up into, and if they're coming from then into, from a $100,000 house, somebody who's renting can then afford that. So there is a trickle-up kind of effect, and if we weren't at this crisis level, it would be a little different, but I think at this point, investment at this point and this stage will help multiple people.
Yeah, I thought The Economist made a really good argument from an academic viewpoint, and I appreciate you revisiting that discussion for us. Is there questions for staff? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just for clarification, mostly for the public, though.
Yes.
This is around new developments, this is not urban infill, so the empty lots we have are not a piece of this program.
Thank you, I really appreciate you say that. There might be times, it's a possible, when you're doing urban infill, that a water line needs to be changed out or whatever, or some new thing needs to be done infrastructure-wise. If it's just maintenance, the city covers that, but there are occasions when something new, infrastructure, is needed, in which case the 20-year specials would be considered for that. But make no bones about it, 90-some percent of the benefit of this will be new developments, not just a house here and a house there within the city.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe, and I could be wrong, perhaps the manager could help me with this, we have a 20-year special arrangement for particular targeted areas that are economically disadvantaged for that infill already in place. Do we have a program or?
In terms of, in terms of 20s, Kathy's already explained that there has to be a financial reason to go from 15 to 20 right now, and it's judged by a committee, I think you serve on that committee, and it's a case-by-case basis. In terms of infill, we have the Affordable Housing Fund, we did at one point have neighborhood revitalization areas, which provided tax abatement for improvements in the district. Councilmember Bluebaugh has talked about whether, you know, whether we should bring that back as well. We got out of it because our partners, the school district and the county, had withdrawn from the program.
Further questions for staff? Councilmember Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Does the county or school board have to approve this at all?
No, this does not affect them. Yeah, that's a, that's a simple answer. We could, we could look to them for other programs later, but today is all about the city's budget.
I didn't think so.
We issue the debt, so it's just the council.
All right, well, no further questions for staff, thank you. Is there further input from the public? If there's no further input from the public, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I understand the needs for this and how it can be beneficial, so I am supportive, but as always, I really would like to see that neighborhood revitalization area come back and see what we can do for middle-class and poverty-class homes, and get that going, and do some more infill in those areas. So whenever we can revisit that neighborhood revitalization area, I'd love to do that.
And Councilmember Johnson, I think his concern is shared, that this should be seen as one piece to a larger puzzle. I think that staff has shared our efforts when it comes, I believe, 5 million of ARPA funds plus other resources to our revised Affordable Housing Program. We are looking at this to pull more new build permits, that is a top-five indicator for economic health, and it's one that we're lacking in. We are not, we're looking good numbers-wise when it comes to unemployment rate, job creation, private sector investment, we don't look very good when it comes, as the charts show, when it comes to new permits being pulled for new home development. And what this does is it just allows for lesser payment coming to the city for specials, sidewalks, infrastructure, lesser payment a month for folks who are trying to move into those homes. So it's, it seems like while we wait for a market correction over the next two years where we can revisit this, this is a real important step to ensure that families can take that step into home ownership. Councilmember Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, Kathy, thank you so much for providing the Wichita area's single-family home building permits that you shared from 1998 until currently, it's very eye-opening, it really lays the problem out there on the table, and from the comments I'm hearing from Councilmember Johnson and the mayor, getting a lot of head nods over here, I think this is a major priority for Wichita, and it's just, it's way past time, we've got to do something. So I appreciate everything you've done to put all this together and let the council as well as the public know what an issue this is here in Wichita.
Thank you. Further discussion? And I'll just, I'll make the motion, but before I speak to it, that really, I'm from a state originally where homeownership is almost unattainable for many people. The, the season for buildings, smaller, it's New Hampshire, but also property taxes and just costs, it's to the point where working families can't afford a home. Like my, I've said this before, and I won't harp on it, but my mom and dad worked their whole lives, they'll never afford a house. And one of the things about Wichita that makes us so great is you can get that piece of the American dream, owning your own home and then passing that asset down, creating that intergenerational wealth to that next generation, to your kids. And that's so important, and it's something I think that we almost take for granted here in Wichita, because it's been the norm here, that houses have been affordable. As we see our houses actually increase in value, that's not necessarily a bad thing, it's a bad thing when we run out of inventory, it's a bad thing when these other economic indicators start grinding to a halt, because we're going to see not only inflation in the international markets when it comes to supply, but also just inflation in the housing costs because of the supply here, not just with material supply. I was joking with Councilmember Hoheisel, kind of joking, depending on his reaction, saying, hey, we got to go to my rental house, tear the roof off, and I need his help putting a new roof on, and his eyes got big, saying, do you know the cost of plywood right now? And, you know, we can't help the price of plywood, that's, some of this is coming in from Canada, coming in from the international markets, but as a city, we can help when it comes to lowering that monthly payment for just this needed infrastructure. So I think this is a positive step forward, it's part of a bigger picture, and I think that that's also important, that, you know, we like to work with our friends in the community, but also with staff. Are there other things we can be doing, not just for new development, but for infill or for creating other ways to try to make homes more affordable? So we're going to keep our eyes open when it comes to that policy, but I do appreciate the, not only the detail with the presentations and the meetings, but also bringing in economists, bringing in third-party folks to give us another perspective as well. So with that, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the 20-year program of 20-year special assessments for developers who, together with all affiliates, are current in all real estate taxes and outstanding special assessments, and direct staff to meet with industry representatives to develop implementation timelines and program details. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll.
And Mayor, your motion is for a two-year program, right?
Yes, two years, is that what I said? Did I say 20?
20, yeah. I knew what you meant, but I thought we better get it in the record.
Okay, I was going to say that. Two years, the motion's for two years, sorry, Wes. So, thank you for the point of clarification. The roll has been opened, all but one person has taken a vote. Now we have the full council, seven yea votes to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2022 sidewalk maintenance program.
Welcome back, Mr. Janson.
Thank you, Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering, Mayor and City Council. The item for you is the proposed 2022 sidewalk maintenance program. Public Works and Utilities oversees an annual program for sidewalk repairs as provided by Charter Ordinance Number 88, which you heard about just a little bit earlier today. Staff receives requests for repair uneven and broken sidewalk sections that may be considered a trip hazard or safety concern, and I might reiterate that again, this program is based entirely on input from the public, complaints that are received. When we receive a complaint about sidewalk, we have inspectors that review the entire block on both sides of the street, and the reason why that's done is to make sure that we find any issues within the immediate area. It's not possible for us to go out and proactively look at these, because as soon as we do that, we would have to cover the entire city from a liability standpoint. Cost of most repairs would be fully reimbursed by the budding property owner, which I'll come back to in just a moment. Just to show you a couple of pictures of the things that we look at and what's considered as far as when we go out and look at these, that needs to be repaired and potentially replaced. Sections of sidewalk that are inadequate and are potentially dangerous to pedestrian traffic will be condemned, multiple cracks or cracks that are wide enough to grow grass. One of the things we looked at the most, which I'll show you, and you can see this is spalled area with sidewalk missing, we get a lot of concerns about trip hazards, our threshold for that is one inch. When we see this type of issue that could be a potential safety hazard, a lot of times we will barricade these sidewalks off until the repairs can be made. Sidewalks that exceed ADA standards for cross-slope or that have reverse slope on them that hold water, again, that that could be a dangerous situation for pedestrians are condemned. But I think we're pretty consistent in how this is done, we've got some good staff that spend a lot of time doing this, and we've got engineers that are educated in what they're looking for, to try to be consistent across the community. Upon verification of sidewalk repairs, state statute requires that property owners receive a minimum of 30 days, the opportunity to have those repairs made by a licensed contractor. If the sidewalk can be leveled, that can be done too without making repairs, we've seen that be successful in the past. If property owners choose not to make the repairs by way of a licensed contractor, we hire an annual on-call contractor to make those repairs. With $1 million budget annually each year, we are able to provide a very competitive cost by economy of scale, almost always ends up being cheaper than most property owners can hire a contractor to do it themselves. We've improved this process over time. It used to be not too long ago that when a sidewalk complaint was received, we marked the sidewalk, it could be as much as 18 months before repairs were made. There was a lot of reasons why that was a slow and arduous process. We have made a lot of improvements now to try to get this done as quick as possible. Generally, we're making repairs within six months after we hear the complaint. The adopted CIP includes $1 million in 2022 for this program. The majority of the cost will be offset by direct payment from or special assessments as allowed by the ordinance over five years to the adjacent property owners. Anytime that there is sidewalk repairs necessary at intersection corners, we consider that more of a city-at-large issue, and that cost is covered by the city and not directly assessed. So other than that, anything directly adjacent to properties are assessed to the properties. Staff is requesting authorization of the full budget amount at this time. With that, staff recommends that City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask this earlier, but I knew this was on the agenda, so I figured I'd save you a couple of steps going back and forth. What's our current policy regarding if the city's, if trees growing in the public easement are at fault for the condition of the sidewalk?
So our current policy, and it's been this way for some time, and I've got some historic information that I was able to find recently, going back to the city attorney, it might have been two city attorneys prior to Jennifer, that looked at this issue then even at that time, but our policy has been that that sidewalk repair is still the responsibility to adjacent property owners. One of the, couple of reasons why that it's been viewed that way, generally, so trees that are within the city right-of-way are the responsibility of the city to maintain as needed. However, what the philosophy had historically been is that that doesn't mean that the city actually planted those trees, in most cases, it would be impossible to know. Right now, current process is, not that everybody in the public knows it, but if you're going to plant a tree within the public right-of-way, you have to get a permit to do so. I'm sure there's plenty of trees that are planted that people don't even realize that's what needs to be done, but going back in time, I feel pretty confident that there were a lot of trees planted within the city right-of-way that just got done that way, right? So that doesn't mean that we're trying to say that it's the right reason to put all the burden on the property owner, but it's, in a lot of situations, especially in some of the older neighborhoods, historically what we've looked at, those trees probably were not planted by the city, for what it's worth. So that was one consideration. The other was to look at, those trees are valued by most property owners, they bring additional value to the property, and, and, and most people that we talked to do not want those trees taken out. When we find issues with tree roots that are in, whether they're in the public right-of-way or within private property, our goal is to try to save those trees. We get city arborists involved from forestry, have them take a look and see if that we can remove the root system and keep the trees without causing damage, says that it's a safety issue, the tree's going to die, so we make every effort we can, first and foremost, to still save those trees. But to go back to your original question, historically, all of that cost has still remained on the property owner.
Okay. Is that something we're looking at with our assessment right now?
We're compiling some information to provide to the city manager that I've been working on with Alan King, and as the manager mentioned earlier, I think there'll be some additional information forthcoming on that.
Okay, thank you.
So I just have a question about the repairs. What happens if someone's confident in their abilities, lacks a license, and they go out and they actually fix the sidewalk on their own? and they actually fix the sidewalk on their own, but they can't show to the city that they had a licensed person do it? And I'm thinking about, you know, the guys on my street who've fixed everything by themselves. They're older, they're capable of doing this stuff. What happens i- in a situation like that, where you guys actually make them take out the repaired work, or where you come out and inspect that work? How would that?
You know, we have had that happen even a couple of times in the last few years. It becomes a real liability concern just from a safety standpoint, trying to be consistent on why we require a licensed contractor. However, in trying to work with the public, we have had that happen before. There's a lot of people that do those types of things, and probably not as many as it used to be in the past. But I can remember as a kid growing up, doing that type of work with my dad, my grandpa. If there was sidewalk to be repaired, we'd just take care of it, right? So what we've tried to do is to to find as much information as we can when those repairs were made. We would want to check and see to make sure it's the right thickness, see what type of concrete they use. We have tried to be fair and adaptive with people on that. And if there's a way that we think it was done correctly, and then it can remain in place, we will try to work with them as much as we can.
Okay, that was a good answer, not encourage that type of behavior, but also not to discourage i- if it happened in the past.
I think that's a good way to say it, Mayor.
That was that was that was well done. Further discussion or questions with staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Just to our Director of Legal, as if you don't have enough on your plate, if there's an opportunity to revisit this, if if the latest opinion was two, two attorneys ago, there's reason to believe that there might have been some changes in state law since then. But if we could just just get a somewhat of a, I guess, a memo on what the responsibility, who it falls to regarding trees and, you know, the the questions from Councilmember Hoheisel and from the person who spoke in public forum today.
Mr. Mayor, we'll do that.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast a vote. Ever receive seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance authorizing use of Hyatt proceeds.
Morning, sir.
Morning, Mayor, City Council. Corey Buckto with the Office of Community Services. Some background on this. On September 5, 2017, City Council adopted ordinance on city code which authorized the use of Hyatt Regency Wichita sale proceeds to fund projects in Council Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Subsequent ordinances have authorized additional projects and allocations, and District 3's allocation of funds has not yet been fully utilized. So there are three proposed projects in District 3 allocating about $17,000. The first would be a contribution of $2,000 dedicated to the Neighbors Indeed Program. And if you're not familiar, that was, it's a 503(c) started by a Civic Engagement Academy graduate, Richard Ruth. The program provides services to elderly, handicapped, and low-income residents who found themselves either in environmental court or about to be cited for environmental violations. So he recruits volunteers to help assist the property owner clean up and correct any property violations. The second proposed project is a $5,000 contribution to the Kansas Aviation Museum in support of the Black Aviators exhibit, and in particular, the contributions of Ulysses Gooch, better known as Rip Gooch. He's a well-known politician and aviation entrepreneur, has served the Wichita area as a city council member, and as a Kansas State Senator from the late 80s to the early 2000s, and continued to be a voice for the community well after his retirement. And the final project is an authorization of up to $10,000 proposed for studies, such as an environmental review or Section 106 review for the Plainview Facility Exploratory Project. It's recommended that the City Council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Questions for staff. Councilmember Blubow.
Bob, how many, how much money is left in the Hyatt funding?
I just looked at this. There is almost nothing left. I think we had large projects in your district, in District 6, District 5, District 2, and we had a series of projects in District 1 and in District 4. So I think we spent almost all of the money in, in those, in Districts 1 and 3, excuse me. Yeah, yeah. But in this case, we'll have spent everything now in District 3, except for some money that's coming back from a loan program.
Was there any more money in 6?
No, I believe all of that went for the Evergreen Project.
All right, thank you. Bob, how much money is left in a mayor's account?
The mayor, I think, took credit for the street repair work that was financed.
And you went ahead and deducted that from the account? All right. Further questions for staff? See none. Well done. Input from the public on this item? If you are speaking from the public, just feel free to make a way forward on any items. See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? Let's go ahead and hand the floor over to Councilmember Hoheisel for further discussion on this, since this is affecting District 3.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm thrilled to be able to take part in this, to push this through. I'm sure many of you are familiar with Senator Gooch and his illustrious career. He deserves to to have a spot atop the Black Aviators exhibit. The Aviation Museum also sits in my district as well. So this is just me taking care of my own, and the Neighbors Indeed Program is a great program. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. He, Richard Ruth, and a handful of volunteers have been going around. We cut down a tree that had fallen for in an 84-year-old widow's yard that would have been, had to been cleaned up by MABCD. So this also helps alleviate the pressure that's going in that direction as well. So these are some great things, and I'm just, I'm really pleased to be able to allot the money in these, for these worthy programs. So without any anything else, if there's no further discussion, I would like to move that we place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Northwest Wichita Water Facility Aesthetics Improvements.
Good morning, and welcome.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Bill Perkins, Public Works and Utilities. What I have before you here is an agreement with Nine Dot Arts for art consultant for the, related to the Northwest Water Facility. As you may recall, project generally started back in 2017, 2018 with City Council direction to go out and seek some alternative funding, and we were successful with that. And we're working on the project diligently towards a completion in the winter of '24, '25. In the overall project, program budget, there was an element for art and aesthetics, about one and a quarter million, about exactly one and a quarter million for that element. Staff put out an RFP for an art consultant to be the lead and responsible party to do the design and installation of this element. Three proposals were received. All three proposals were interviewed by a screening and selection committee. The committee was made up of the Project Steering Committee, which has two city council members and then other stakeholders and some city staff. The basics is outlined in the RFP of areas for consideration, some are along Zoo Boulevard and the railroad tracks, basically the the boundary between the zoo and the new water facility. Also, in front of an admin and lab building, which will be generally at 21st and Hoover, and inside that same building, there's a large foyer lobby meeting room area. So the timing of this work, all of it has to be completed when the water plant is completed due to funding requirements. The work that's related to the admin and lab building can't start until September of '23, and that's because of when the city would actually have that available from the Wichita Water Partners who's constructing it. So the recommended proposal from the Steering, Screening and Selection Committee was with Nine Dot Arts. Nine Dot Arts has a very thorough process that they had identified for the project, starting with a visioning sessions and developing a roadmap, and then a public call for artists. And that public call for artists will come back and involve the Project Steering Committee and possibly some others in a selection process, and then they will finish the administration of having that design and installation all completed. So the recommendation is to approve the agreement with Nine Dot Arts for this work. I stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. With that, we're bringing discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, the chair recognizes, it doesn't have it on my notes, but I believe this is in Councilmember Frye's district. That's okay. Chair recognizes Councilmember Ballard as this resides in District 6.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we take the staff's recommendation that the City Council approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made in the second of Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
PUD 2022-7, city zone change from multifamily and multifamily residential to planned and unit development for mixed-use development on properties located on the south side of East 17th Street North and east of North Hillside Avenue between North Harvard Avenue and North Gentry Street.
Hey, Scott. Good morning.
Good morning. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. This item is being presented to you today for two reasons. The first is because the DAB and the Planning Commission recommendations are, they're both for approval, but they're slightly different, and I'll explain what what that was. And then number two, because there was a protest for this case. So as the clerk has described in the title, this application is for rezoning from B multifamily residential and MF29 multifamily residential to PUD, or Planned Unit Development, which is custom zoning. Terms of the property, it is generally located southeast corner of the intersection of Harvard Avenue and 17th Street. It's about 3.7 acres in size and is currently developed with a mix of low to medium density residential uses, which you can see on the aerial here. In terms of the request, the request is to rezone it again to PUD, custom zoning. The applicant is requesting this rezoning in order to allow for a larger buildable area on the property, two, to reduce the parking requirements, and three, to allow for commercial uses on the site. The proposed rezoning would create two zoning parcels, and I'll show you a graphic of where those are. B multifamily uses or the uses allowed in B multifamily zoning district would be allowed on both parcels. The commercial uses would only be allowed in parcel one, which, again, I'll show you a little bit later, but it's the larger portion of the site further to the north. The area surrounding this property is primarily zoned for multifamily development and has a mixture of multifamily and single-family dwellings. North of the property is WSU. Property to the east is zoned B multifamily residential and LC commercial, developed with a coffee shop, a bar, multifamily, and single-family residential uses. Property to the south is zoned MF29 multifamily and B multifamily, and is developed with a mix of multifamily and single-family uses. Property to the west is zoned PUD and MF29 multifamily residential. PUD is developed with multifamily uses and includes reduced parking and setback standards. The MF29 property are developed with single-family dwellings. In terms of review, on April 21, the MAPC heard this application, recommended approval 12-0. Subject to staff recommendations, no members of the public spoke at this hearing. Now, one note in how this is different than what the recommendation from the DAB is that the MAPC recommendation did not require the planting of street trees. On May 2, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request and recommended approval 8-1, subject to staff recommendation with the inclusion of a requirement to plant street trees at a rate of one tree per 40 linear feet along the boundary of the PUD where it abuts the street right-of-way. And that's on a couple sides here. So in terms of council action, this is a recommendation from the MAPC. It is recommended that the City Council adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval of the second reading. You have a number of alternatives, as always. One alternative is to override the MAPC recommendation, accept the DAB recommendation, and approve the zone change, requiring the planting of street trees. This would require five of seven votes, or two-thirds. You can override the MAPC recommendation, provide alternative findings, and deny the zone change. This also would require five of seven votes. Or, as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration. This requires a simple majority of four of seven votes. And with that, I will take you through some of the images and maps. So here again is the aerial, which the red outlines the site. Here is the existing zoning in the area. You can see that it's it's a mix of a variety of different zoning districts. This is the map from the comprehensive plan showing residential unemployment mix forecasted in the area. This is the graphic from the PUD, so their site plan, and I believe, here we go. So parcel one, the area with the commercial uses, again, is the area in red, which is a larger portion of the site. Parcel two is the area in green. Parcel two would be restricted just to the residential uses. Here's a concept that the applicant submitted. You can see that there's a number of residential buildings and mixed-use buildings to the north. This is the site with the protest area. You can see that one protest was received. Again, this is less than the 20% threshold set by the state. Does not require supermajority. These are some photos from the site. So this is looking at the site. Again, more properties on the site. This is looking across the street. This is looking across the street. Looking at the site, at the cul-de-sac. Across the street to WSU. Looking at the coffee shop on the corner. And the fieldhouse. And properties across the street. This is the apartment building located to the south of the site. There's the aerial. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. We'll bring discussion to the bench. If there's no further discussion, we will recognize Councilmember Johnson, as this resides in District 1.
Thanks, Mayor. I would move that the council override the MAPC recommendation, accept the DAB recommendation, and approve the zone change and require the planting of street trees.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Zone 2022-20, zone change in the city from single-family residential to two-family residential and limited commercial, generally located on the northeast corner of North 167th Street West and West Maple Street.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. This item is being presented today because there was a protest against the case. The application is for rezoning from SF5 single-family to TF3 two-family residential and LC limited commercial zoning. The property is generally located at the northeast corner of 167th Street and Maple Street. It is approximately 12.89 acres in size, and it is currently vacant in agricultural use. The request is to rezone it to TF3 and LC to accommodate the development of duplexes and commercial uses on the site. In terms of context, east and adjacent to the site is a PUD. It's current, it's a residential subdivision currently under construction. It's current, it's a residential subdivision currently under construction. West are properties zoned rural residential and in use for agricultural fields. But also, there are also properties zoned MH manufactured housing and partially developed as a manufactured home park. There's also rural residential zoned single-family residence and rural residential zoned standalone garage slash accessory structure. South, across Maple Street, are properties in the unincorporated county, ZONE SF20 residential and developed with single-family residences. In terms of review, on April 21st, the MAPC reviewed the application and recommended approval per staff comments. That was unanimous 13-0. One person objected to the requested rezoning, and in particular, to the LC zoning at the MAPC meeting. On May 2nd, the District Advisory Board heard the case, recommended approval per staff comments. That vote was 5-1-1. One member of the public spoke in opposition to the requested LC zoning as well there. In terms of protests, one valid protest, the zoning request was received. This valid protest totals 15.97% of the protest area. This is below the 20% threshold. Therefore, the MAPC's recommendation may be approved by a simple majority vote. In terms of council action, it's recommended that the City Council adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval of the second reading. In terms of alternatives, you have three of them that are mentioned in the staff report. You can override the MAPC recommendations. And with, you can override the MAPC recommendation, provide alternative findings, and deny the zone change. This would require five of seven votes. You can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration. This would require a simple majority, four of seven. Or as always, you can override the MAPC recommendation and with additional or different conditions. This would require five of seven votes. And with that, I'll take you through some of the images. So here is the site outlined in red. You can see the portion where the LC zoning is requested. You can see the portion of the north with TF3. This is the existing zoning surrounding the area. This is the map from the comprehensive plan showing future residential is recommended in the area. This is the site plan and concept that was submitted as part of the application. Again, LC to the south, TF3 to the north. This is the protest area. And again, the lines on this one are a little bit different because this is where the city butts up against Cedric County. So in Cedric County, the notification distance is 1,000 feet versus in the city where it's generally around 200, maybe a little bit bigger for larger properties. And so that's why the size varies significantly. Here are photos from the site. Again, currently undeveloped. Looking to the north, looking at homes in the subdivision to the east. Looking to the south. This is looking at the mobile homes or manufactured housing to the west. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Discussion? See none. If there's no discussion, then the chair recognized Councilmember Frye as this resides in District Five.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the presentation, Scott, and this is an area that is seeing a lot of growth and opportunity. So I'm happy to make the motion to adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested zone change as recommended by MAPC and place the ordinance on first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll open and roll. Members cast the vote. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
Let's start off with appointments. Are there appointments to be made? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you to interim Assistant City Manager Kathy Sexton for reminding me. I would need to appoint myself to the downtown streets and parking master plan steering committee.
Is there a conflict of interest legal? Just kidding. Is that the only appointment?
Yeah.
All right. Further appointments, I would like to reappoint to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board, Mr. Jonathan McRae, or excuse me, McRory. I also need to acknowledge the Cedric County Commission's appointment to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board, Busha Quilah Banks. Also need to acknowledge the following appointments to the Stormwater Advisory Board, Greg Allison, Chris Boham, Don Kirkland, Don Henry, Gary O'Bourney, Scott Lineback, George Sherman, Gentry Thiessen, Allison Hearing. And I have the list for the clerk. Is there further appointments? If there's no further appointments, then I'll make the motion to accept all the appointments as they were stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll open and roll. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass, and those members, or those folks are appointed. Back on comments. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. This is completely my fault because I threw my note sheet away on accident. Item six on the consent agenda, I asked you, Bob, on Friday about that debt collection company. Did we, did you ever hear back the type of way they, treatment that they give to customers?
Councilmember Johnson, yes, I sent something out yesterday to the council in terms of the references. They came back very positive.
Okay. And then secondly, Scott left. But do we know you have to pull a permit to build a house? But would a permit be granted if there's a house in front of this house being built? So it looks like an accessory dwelling unit, but it's a full house?
In the hypothetical, I don't know how we answer that, but we, if you have circum, if you have the circumstances, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah. I need to drive back by there. I got a report on blight, tall grass and weeds in the front, and the house looked like it was abandoned. And then I get to the corner and I see what looks like a brand-new house being built in the backyard, just as big as the first one. So I'll, I'll get that address because I thought that was.
It's possible under those circumstances, they'll demo the front house if they are building a full house in the back. But again, let us look at it.
Okay. Councilmember Blueba.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank everybody that came out for the cleanup, the neighborhood cleanup Saturday around Truesdale, and just wanted to share some of the stories that were out there. Greg and Nancy live in the neighborhood, and they were the ones that actually asked to help sponsor cleanup. They went around and knocked on everybody's door, handed out the flyers, and wanted to put a shout out to Dan and his son that Becky Fields, my assistant, works with. And they bring them into the cleanups and they pull the scrap metal out so that the city's not paying dump fees on there. They've estimated that they've saved well in excess of $20,000 from us not having to pay that and the recyclability. And also, Chris Stark showing up there and picking up some of the old bicycles and taking them to BikeWalk Wichita so that they can be refurbished and donated out to the community. So appreciate everybody stepping up there and helping out Saturday.
Excellent. This Councilmember Hoheisel have an announcement about breakfast this weekend.
That's right, Mr. Mayor. District Three is having our first district breakfast in quite a while. It will be at the New Life Church, I believe, on South Broadway. It will be nine thirty, Christian Faith Center, I apologize, at 9:30 on Saturday, and we will have a special guest speaker. The mayor of Wichita will be there, so I encourage everybody to come on down, and it will be a free breakfast this time around. I will be footing the bill for that one. So I encourage everybody, come on down and get a, get a good plate of breakfast, and let's, let's, let's meet and congregate.
Very good. I have two items that, first, before I forget, both of them are serious items. Mr. Manager, could we get an update on the RFP process for the study? Folks in the community have reached out and wanted an update on that. I know that you have discussed the process, where we're at with members of the council. Could you also just give us a brief update on for the public?
Yes, Mayor. We, I believe, closed the period for supplemental of proposals on Friday. We've received nine proposals. There will be a selection committee that will review those, including two members of the council, and will, in all likelihood, narrow it down to a smaller number for interview, and then at that point, we'll bring something forward for the council, hopefully to keep, hope to keep it moving. But with nine, it's going to take a little while, I think, for the committee to review and narrow the field.
Very good. Appreciate the update. And is there any further comments? So not necessarily a motion, but if there is no objection, I would like to direct staff to, to send former councilmember Stan Reesert and his family flowers. He suffered a death in his family, I believe it was his daughter, and just awful situation. And as a former councilmember and current public servant on the school board, I was hoping that we could show our support to the family by sending a flower arrangement if possible. There is no objection, so thank you. All right. So with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll open and roll. I don't know which one of you keeps pressing nay, but I love it. Have received six yea votes. That motion does pass. Yikes, it was, it was me. If I could be recorded as a yea vote, this.
I think that was the nay.
That was, I just didn't want to leave. Have a good week, everyone.